Okay, it is now 6:00 PM on September 28th, 2021. I'd like to call the special meeting to order of the San Mateo County Harbor District Board of Harbor Commissioners. If I could have a roll call, please, Melanie.
Commissioner Chang Crowley.
Present.
Commissioner Ryaring.
Present.
Commissioner Metuush.
Present.
Commissioner Zemki.
Present.
Commissioner Lorenas.
Okay, so we have a quorum and we'll go on to item B, which is public comments for items that are not on the regular agenda. I don't see any hands raised, but let me double check. I don't see any hands raised for public comment. So I will close public comment now and we will go to the next item, which is basically the item for this public workshop, which is direct off-the-boat sales, item C. Jim, if you'd like to kick off this staff report, that would be great.
Yes, thank you, President Crowley. And I would just want to say good evening and welcome to everybody who's participating tonight. Thank you for your time, but thank you for taking time out of your schedule. Your input's valued and will be considered. This introduction will be short as I'm more interested in what your feedback is by just hearing my own voice. We originally presented this concept to the harbor board in February 17th, 2021. Following the presentation, the board directed staff to host a public workshop with stakeholders to seek their input. That's how we got here today. To be clear, we are discussing direct-to-the-consumer sales, commonly referred to as off-the-boat sales. We are seeking your input on how best to implement a fee for customer access for your commercial sale of seafood. We are not discussing wholesale of seafood to wholesale businesses. We will be discussing wholesale of seafood in Pillar Point Harbor on Thursday evening, and I hope you can join us Thursday to provide your input on that topic. The purpose of the fee being considered is to enable the district to address the burden on the district facilities as a result of the large number of customers visiting the harbor to conduct business with off-the-boat commercial activity permit holders. The burden includes facility maintenance, restroom support, trash, parking, and supervision, among others. To cover the costs associated with off-the-boat sales, the district is exploring a new fee that would be imposed on the permit holders. The fee would be integrated into the commercial activity permit and permit customers of the permit holder access to the harbor for the purpose of purchasing seafood directly from the boat. The fee is allowable both under California Harbor and Navigation Code and district ordinances. To conduct direct-to-consumer sales, a commercial activity is currently already required. In addition to the required commercial activity permit, staff is recommending a charge of 2.5% be assessed on the gross sales of the off-the-dock sales. Staff makes this recommendation based on the following. Each fisherman conducting off-the-boat sales must already record each sale on proper Department of Fish and Game receipts. Boats that sell more product have more customers, thus pay more in fees. And the inverse boats that sell less products will have less customers and pay less fees. Percentage fee reflects the current market. In lean seasons where less catch is available, the boats pay less in percentage fees. It allows the fishermen to earn the income from the sale of the product before having to pay the percentage fee to the district. 2.5% is equal to what the leasee fish buyers at the end of the peer pay in percentage fees for off-the-dock sales they participate in. Again, that's not the wholesale business. Staff also consider, but does not recommend, the fee for customer access be charged as a single charge on the commercial activity permit. A single charge does not reflect current market. As such, vessels would pay a certain amount regardless of the catch. A single charge is also difficult to assess on visiting vessels conducting off-the-dock sales. It would also force the fishermen to pay a fee upfront before he or she receives payment for the catch. This is also an equity issue. Passenger vessels paid $21,153 in passenger fees last year. Again, that's for access to their vessels on public docks. It is only equitable that the permit holders support the district in a similar manner based on their customer base. A recommendation was received by the district from a fisherman at Pillar Point Harbor to cap the percentage fees at $2,000 per year. If the district were able to adopt this recommendation, the district would receive between $84,000 and $136,000, assuming all off-the-boat commercial activity holders sell at least $85,000 worth of catch. With that, I would like to open the floor to anyone wanting to make a comment or pose a question. We will limit the original round of questions to two minutes per speaker and we'll keep going around until questions have all been answered. And with that, if you'd like to make a, pose a question to the proposed cap or anything else in the staff report, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Lizzie, can you let Jake in?
Sure.
Good evening.
Evening, Jake.
Am I able to be heard?
Loud and clear.
Okay, standby, I have my notes I wanted to tell you here in a different. You're gonna have to come back to me, I got Xed out of my screen here, I have some notes I want to read off to you guys, can you come back to me?
Okay, Lizzie, can you let Porter McHenry in, please? Evening, Porter.
Good evening. Just want to share a couple thoughts on the dock sales. I'm all for dock sales, I think they should be allowed. There's up to the guys that are mainly into it, more so than me, and with you guys figure out the exact fees. But my issue I'd like to bring up is, I'd like to see the dock sales can be kept as what they were intended to be. There's been a lot of other boats buying and selling, bringing fish down to the boat, selling, you know, using it as almost a seafood market, which is just not what it was intended. I got some wording, I would like, you know, them only to sell no previously landed products off of their boats. And for to be in the dock sale program, you have to go out, catch the fish, and then you can come in and sell it. I believe if, you know, we're redoing this, looking at it, that would be a way to keep it as intended and stop some of the other problems. But overall, I love, I love how it's brought the amazing amount of people to the harbor. It's really incredible to see the people that come. There are some issues with that, I understand, but I think we work together, we could keep a real good program going with everybody, thank you.
Thanks, Porter. Jake, are you ready? I see Commissioner Lorenas has joined us.
Yes, Melanie, just please note that Commissioner Lorenas joined us at 6:04, thank you.
And Jake, you should be unmuted, are you ready to talk?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear, Jake.
All right, yeah, I just have a couple quick points after going over the agenda and looking things over here. And this keeps knocking me out of the screen, I want to see, the Zoom keeps, hold on one second. Okay, you still got me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, so on the issue of an equal playing field, a level playing field, and as far as what I do, what a couple other guys do in the harbor with the off-the-boat sales as it relates to the CPFV fees, it seems to me that there is a discrepancy between the fees that are currently paid by the CPFV boats and the proposed fees for the off-the-boat sales, commercial activities, permittees like myself. It's my, if my math is correct, CPFV operators are paying around 1.5% fee as it's collected under the passenger service fee, that's my understanding of it. That percentage, you know, it's based on the per-passenger fee of $2.53, but when you factor in the cost of a customer or the revenue from a single customer on one of those boats, which is at my last check, $170, that $2.53 fee equates to an effective fee rate of 1.5%. And I think it's important to remember that number as it's being compared to the 2.5% that we're talking about for this new fee structure. So that's the first item I wanted to discuss, can I have another minute or two on that clock?
You can have 20 to 30 seconds because that's how, that's.
And we'll come back to you, Jake, if there's more.
All right, so my second point is that I calculated the three-year average of the revenue generated from the public sales from the off-the-dock leases at the terminus of the pier. We call those the wholesale leases. It's about $289 a year, and that's based on what's supposedly a 2.5% fee. And that equates to a total of annual revenue generated by all the leases at the terminus of about $11,560, that's an average, okay, over those three years. That number is not right, there's something wrong with that number. That low total is, to me, clear evidence that there's a problem with the accounting of or the collection of those fees. And in my opinion, that model tells me that it's not a good model moving forward when we talk about a larger-scale fee based on, that we're talking about charging the off-the-boat sales. So my suggestion, and this is my last quick point, is that we look more towards a flat fee for the off-the-boat leaseholders. And that, to me, is a much cleaner and simpler approach to the whole process, thank you.
I see. Lizzie, I know that Don Korth is trying to get on via a phone.
Ms. Korth, what is the, oh, I guess she can't talk. We just need the last four digits of the phone number that she's using, and then I can allow that number to talk. Don, maybe you can put that in chat, okay, I see you. Okay, I think this is you.
Then how do you unmute on a phone, Lizzie? There we go, go ahead, Don.
Can you hear me?
Oh, it's Todd, yes, Todd.
Okay, so, thank you very much, I just got down here, believe it's your fishing. So it's best to be extremely direct in these types of conversations. And I'd like to comment on Porter's comments, which, or maybe he can get on the phone after this and clarify, where his request is that the only fish that can be sold off the dock are those that were caught previously landed. And I've mentioned to you on several occasions throughout the years, aggressively tried to enact competitive measures, which were in full force last crab season. Rico, not Suave Rico, but Rico is anti-competitive. And some of us have invested in technology that allows technology to last. And just because the product is frozen, it's still, you know, abide by the harbor laws, rules, caught by that fisherman, and sold off his boat. And that comment, unless I'm mishearing what he is saying, it's completely anti-competitive in spirit and is targeted at certainly our operation. And I find that extremely offensive that we have to, you're along these president of the association, going through this anti-competitive strategy just nonstop. And especially full force last year with the crab season where buyers were, had phone calls from association members and told not to take our crap, that's illegal, that is illegal. And the harbor should be very careful not to immerse themselves in that type of conduct because it's wrong. That's my first point, second point is obviously a 2.5%. Everybody, all these fishermen are paying sales tax on all the gear that they buy, state taxes on their income. I mean, California is one of the most overtaxed states in the country. And this 2.5%, and hopefully a cap wouldn't be enacted because it's just, it's one of those things with the fish taxes. There's just tax, 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 everywhere. And all the people like myself that try to get their customers down there, you know, we put a significant amount of effort and understand those customers come over and eat in restaurants, they put fuel in. And that is, all those expenditures, the county and the state are getting sales tax off all that effort. I think we need to be real careful what we do here and not stifle, you know, the dock sales.
All right, I got.
But I want to bring up the competitive part, that part is, to me, is offensive.
I got both your comments there, Todd, thank you. Dan Snell?
Let's see, unmute.
You're unmuted, loud and clear.
Okay, great, I'll just get started, good evening to everybody and thank you for letting me talk. I've been a happy dock sales seller for the last seven or eight years and enjoyed the opportunities that Half Moon Bay has presented when I haven't seen that in other ports. I do think your 84,000 number, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, you know, how, where that number came from, I think there are a lot of people, people that, you know, I know in the harbor that would say that I think that that number is pretty high, you know. And so, and I think although the, you know, the customer base, you know, provides trash and stuff for, you know, that the port has to deal with, I can appreciate that. But, you know, a lot of those people, not everybody that comes down is buying seafood. You know, we get a lot of people that walk up and maybe don't make a purchase, but they're still eating in your restaurants, that, you know, your tenants for your restaurants and their food stores. And so I think that the 2.5% could be a little much, I think it's a little high. I, like Jake said, I would like to see a flat fee, you know, maybe a flat fee of $500 or something that's a little more palatable. You know, I could get behind that, and maybe that would help with some of the trash. And it would lighten our already huge amount of paperwork that the state laid on us last year with having to really make detailed receipts for every customer. And so, you know, just some things like that, I'm just trying to, you know, a lot of us are fishing and trying to do the marketing off the boats and stuff as well. A lot of us don't have a secretary or somebody there that's, you know, able to, you know, do all this stuff. So it falls on the guys that are catching it to do all this other stuff too. And to me, this seems like a lot more hoops at the end of the day, getting on the computer. I don't know how, you know, it's gonna go through, if you guys do put it through, I sure hope that you put some easy things together to make it so that it's not gonna be difficult for us for a bigger workload for us at the end of the day. And that's all I've got, and thanks for letting me talk.
Thanks, Dan. Captain Day.
Can you hear me now?
Loud and clear, Captain.
Okay, Dan. Yeah, I'm against the sales tackle, tackle. The guys briefed over some points there, like a lot of the traffic at the harbor are lucky lose. And we'll, you know, they'll just see a looking and we'll create new clientele by them, oh, damn, there's a fish for sale here too. And a lot of my clients, I'll say, yeah, I'm eating at the restaurant first, et cetera, et cetera. And basically what you're doing is wanting a piece of my pie. And saying that, James, with all respect, I gotta shoot from the hip. And it's not often I'm here at the commission. And in all honesty, times I have looked at the commission, I'm sorry, with some of your prior members, et cetera, it's just been childish, and I shake my head and I go fishing. And really, what is the purpose of this? You want more revenue, and I said this to you too, on the dock there where I honestly think you're top-heavy. And you could probably save some money there, in all honesty, to have a good look at that with a stark report on because your numbers are going up and I'm not seeing the effort. You know, we've got big plans, et cetera, but where's the money coming from? So the way I'm looking at it is we're the soft target, so yep, that's easy, shoot then, get a bit of that. That's what I'm looking at there. With the tax, if that comes through, here's what I'll do. I've got a client base of 1,500 on my email service, I'll just tell them the way it is. Okay, they need more money, they've added a tax on us, I think they're a bit top-heavy, the commission, et cetera there. So you're gonna do what you're gonna do, but I'm against it. They'll be my email to all my clients in San Mateo. That's all I gotta say on this.
Thanks, Barry, appreciate your input. Don Marshall?
Are my on there?
Yes, loud and clear.
So I just wanted to address that there was a, quite a shift, there's always been some dock sales, but there was quite a shift in dock sales last year during the start of crab season. I'd like to point out that the reason why that happened was because we all went out there after an extended wait where we didn't make any money for three months or four months. And then we realized that the volume was so low that the only way any of us could make a season out of it was to sell off the dock. And had that not happened and lined up, and had we not been lucky enough that the customers were willing to come down here after the wait, we would have seen a lot of people out of business based on the dock price. So it happened in our favor, but really it was a save effort. It wasn't like everybody got a lot of money. I think that it was a poor season where people were able to pull it out by putting out the extra effort. Essentially, not unloading at the end of the dock means that you have to build another business. You're starting another job. Instead of going home and taking whatever you can get, you're making it into more by putting out that extra effort, that extra performance. The harbor is asking for that tax on top of that performance, on top of the user tax, on top of the property tax, on top of the sales tax, on top of the federal tax, on top of the CA DFW licensing and permitting. And keep in mind that the property tax, use tax, that we get charged from the harbor, if I remember correctly, is supposed to be used for the toiletries in the bathrooms and to be used to improve the facilities. When we had this chat about how dock sales is making it so that the toiletries and bathrooms and different trashes are being used, I just don't find that true. I think that when the weather's good, there's great parking and lots of facilities, the people come out. There are people that are our customers that use the facilities, but they simply are not a high percentage. It's just getting used because the county is a beautiful place, it's a place where people can come. I would say, let's come up with a flat fee instead of a percentage and cut down on the paperwork and make this possible. You know, a fee that could work for everybody. And I appreciate you guys taking this into consideration and letting me speak the sequel.
Don, can I ask you a question of what level of fee you would think is appropriate?
I would say that, at this time, the commission and the harbor, you know, I've talked to several harbor employees and asked their input, just because I was curious what they thought about it. I'm not gonna get into names, but as far as I can see, everybody thinks that this is a paperwork nightmare. The quarterly fish fees that we paid a fishing game, may I add, I did not add those in that list of fees. The department charges us a quarterly fish tax based on our fish sales already, and they bill us. But they bill us based on the landings that we put in and the buyers put in into their system. So then they're able to accurately bill. In this case, you guys are gonna have a nightmare, we're gonna have to turn in all of our receipts, monthly or quarterly or however often, and then you guys are gonna have to compile that, it just doesn't make sense. I think that from a percentage standpoint, it doesn't make sense. I think that you need to have a higher flat fee, I've heard $500, I don't know that that's enough. Frankly, I don't want, obviously don't want to pay higher and ask for more, but I would pay more than 500 if it meant avoiding the paperwork nightmare. And I truthfully think that the harbor, once they get their hands around how much of a paperwork nightmare that is and that they do not have the infrastructure put in place to accept that nightmare, they will be sorry, and they'll be wondering, why did we even do this? There was a much easier way to do this, cleaner, and that's my feeling on that.
All right, thanks, Don, I appreciate it. And now I'm gonna call out Moto G Play. Are you there?
Moto G Play, you've been unmuted for comment, can you try speaking? Okay, if you're on a device, if you're on a phone, can you please type in the chat the last four digits of the phone you're dialing in on? And we'll try to unmute you there. I'm not seeing anything in the chat, do you want to move on to another caller?
Is it that 2021 by his name?
There is a 2021, but I don't see any phone numbers ending in that.
Okay. Okay, we'll come back to Moto G Play and go to Tyler Butler. Go ahead.
Yeah, hello, everyone, thank you guys for your time. If I cut out, I'm out fishing right now in an area with spotty service and also was on the back deck working, so I don't know how much of what I missed. So if anything I say is just an echo of what's already been said, I apologize. You know, first off, I'd like to say, yes, I'm a big no on the tax, like, a lot of people have already stated, you know, we are taxed already as it is, you know, fish tax on the landings. We pay our San Mateo County tax, and if I understand correctly, this is a San Mateo County Harbor District, paid for, funded by San Mateo County taxpayers and properly federal money and everything else. So your guys' funding is already accounted for, why are you trying to take out of our personal pockets now? On top of the fact that we already paid for our slip fees, you guys just raised our slip fees, took away the free month for the commercial guys that we paid for a year upfront, you know. We're getting hit from all sides here, not to mention our seasons are heavily impacted with reductions and we never know if we're gonna get a season. So, you know, just those few thoughts there are kind of, you know, irritating to think that, you know, here, we're gonna get hit again with something else. So, you know, I would like to know, what do you need the money for? What are your intentions with this new source revenue that you're trying to create? Do we have a right to know that? Can we see what your plans are? Because, you know, you're just, I don't know if that was said before I jumped on or if I missed that, but, you know, I would just kind of like to know where this money's going. But those are just some of my thoughts. But those are just some of my thoughts there. I got other stuff in the back of my brain, but right now it's just being on the ocean and, uh, you know, trying to pay attention here. I can't think of it. So anyways, that's all I got to say for now. Thank you.
Tyler, if you, uh, have any other thoughts, uh, please feel free to send me an email.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
And with respect to his question, I'd like to address it real quick. Uh, any monies collected through this process would go back into the general fund of the district and used to operate the district to include facility maintenance, uh, at pillar point to, it'll get, uh, absorbed into our general fund. So it could be depending on what we're, how the money is spent, but it could be spent on the Johnson Pier reconfiguration, partial, or the dock replacements, or just simple maintenance of those docks to ensure they stay floating and are safe for the customers. And for, and for you as you, you use it as a commercial fisherman.
Jim, can I add one thing really quickly?
It's your meeting, ma'am. Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, I just, I appreciate what, um, the last member of the public said for sure. But we're also an enterprise district. Yes, some of our revenues come from our property taxes, but some of the revenues also come from, I would say probably forty percent, unless that's changed, come from, um, commercial endeavors. And the commercial activity permits and the fees, all of that goes towards, you know, quite frankly, making sure that, um, the facilities that you use for these commercial endeavors are maintained and managed safely and that they're clean and all of that. So that all comes from our enterprise section of the revenues or of the budget. I think it's important to note that we have a split budget of revenues from enterprise endeavors and our taxes.
Thank you, President Corrali. Frank Souza.
Thanks, Jim. Um, I just, uh, like to come on and say that, you know, we like the opportunity to talk to you guys about this and, uh, thanks for your guys' time. Um, I wanted to touch base kind of on what Porter and Todd were talking about because I, I kind of have the same feelings as Porter and it was designed for the fishermen to bring their catch and whether it was frozen or whatever and sell it from their boat from the sea and not be, um, a mobile fish market. And I just think that that's a real dangerous street to go down because some of these boats might create a business plan off of that and you'll have a bunch of fish markets floating out there and really got to think about Albert, you know, I know Albert's paying, uh, big money for that retail space and to have a retail market floating is probably not the best thing for the other fishermen trying to sell a single product while somebody has a variety of stuff that was, you know, previously landed or anything like that, you know, and whether that affects whoever it is, the guy next to me, the guy across from me or whatever, I, I, I don't, I'm not, not sending any personal attacks on any one person, but that's just kind of the way that it was intended and I've always understood. And, uh, I just wanted to say that wasn't, uh, you know, and that's something not to take lightly. You guys should definitely look into that because that could be a slippery road to go down. And, um, I do think that the fishermen would like to see the, you know, the fees into an easy way, which may be the, an increase in just a flat fee. I mean, you guys should probably assess what, like what Dana was saying, that eighty-five thousand, uh, is probably a high number and you could probably come up with a number that everybody would agree on just paying a flat rate. And I bet you would probably be surprised that you would come out better in the end than going through all this hassle of paying and, and, uh, taxing and, or, uh, you know, quarterlies or whatever, however you guys are going to collect it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Jake Bunce?
You got me there, Jim?
Loud and clear, Jake. Go ahead.
Couple, uh, quick last points to touch on what Barry and Don said. Uh, I'm not sure if this has been thought through by the commission, but, uh, it should definitely give some consideration to the concept that, uh, as Barry said, if we're, uh, looking at, uh, essentially a tax on what, on our, what our business model is generating for revenue, uh, we're going to pass that along to the consumer and that might dissuade people from coming to the harbor. And as you know, people to come to the harbor to buy fish, crab, whatever, there's a ripple effect throughout the rest of the businesses on the coast side, right? So that's, that's point one. Um, that's not a good thing. I think we can all agree on that. The second thing is what Don said, um, he talked a bit about, uh, the, um, flat fee, the idea of a flat fee versus a percentage based on sales. Something to consider if you're going to think about charging a percentage, whatever that might be, that number is always a moving target every single year for the harbor and you balancing your books. Okay? We have a great crab year. There's a lot of dock sales on the crab. The harbor is going to get a big check. Okay? You have a slim year or a big year even when they're, everybody's doing wholesale or what, there's a factor, there's a number of different reasons why you're going to have volatility and the amount of money coming from that revenue stream. So that's something to think about when you're comparing a percentage based fee versus a flat fee. A flat fee is completely predictable for you guys every year and I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate your input. Michael Mack?
You got me?
Loud and clear. Go ahead.
First off, I just want to say, uh, say thank you. Um, I've participated in the dock sales now, just for my third year. Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I, I do agree with the, the slope being slippery with having the, um, percentage tax thrown in, but on the other hand, something maybe to think about when it comes to flat fees, um, is, you know, a lot of these boats, I'm seeing them as small as sixteen footers now that are participating in on the dock sales, which I think is great. Um, and then there's, you know, fifty footers and I feel like we got to be a little bit cautious, perhaps, if anything at all, um, perhaps maybe a tiering, um, like they do with the crab pots, right? You know, your bigger boat gets a five hundred pot permit on down the line. Um, I think there's a lot of different, a lot of different players in this that can be affected and, um, and we just kind of, kind of got to think about everybody here. And sometimes that's a little challenging. Um, but we do have a great harbor. It's awesome to see it come alive on the weekends, especially with all the people. It's great for the other vendors. Um, it's just, it's, it's amazing to watch, really such a nice, nice thing to take place. So anyways, with that being said, um, thank you for letting me put my two cents in and, and, um, looking forward to some more, uh, opportunities to try to help things be good. Thank you.
Thanks, Micah. Thanks for your two cents. Appreciate it. Captain Day? Go ahead, Barry.
You got me now, Jim?
We got you.
Yeah, sorry. I'm just going to reiterate exactly what, um, Pat just said and a hundred percent on that because these guys at the end of my dock that are just starting and I've been there myself and I'm not bringing in a lot of product and a, a high fee to kick off. It's, it's the tier system are, um, you know, if we work it that way, I agree with too, because really this selling has become a tradition and people come and these young guys starting off here and we don't want at this point to sort of crucify them with a high fee when they can't afford it because I see the guys running back and forth with parts, keeping their boat in order. So it, it is something I'll just, I'm backing up what was said prior. That's all. Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, Barry. Dan Snell? You there, Dan?
Dan, you've been unmuted for comment. Oh, sorry. I just hit it again.
All right. Did you get me? Am I good?
Yep.
Loud and clear.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I just wanted to say that I feel like, uh, the flat fee is a bird in the hand. Um, you know, and that's worth something too. And if there's anything I can tell you guys about commercial fishing, one thing you're hearing some tonight is you have good years, you have bad years, you, you know, I know for me even as a smaller vessel, if it's a, if it's a good crab year, a lot of that crab goes to the wholesaler, uh, because we got to get out there and turn and burn. So on a lean year, we're kind of using the dock sales to stay afloat. So, you know, as far as like, uh, trying to find a number that's going to be accurate for, uh, for a business model as far as a commercial enterprise, I feel like the flat fee offers a lot more stability there, uh, because, uh, you're depending on, on us and our seasons with these droughts. We don't even know if we're going to have a salmon season in the next two years. So I think there are a lot of things that are going to be changing in commercial fishing. We've got a lot of hurdles to clear now, more than we've, than I've ever seen in forty years. So I feel like, uh, the flat fee kind of keeps it real simplified for you guys in that regard and definitely, uh, get some more revenue, uh, to the port in a way that's get what you'd call guaranteed money. Um, so I wanted to touch on that. And the second thing is that, uh, nobody's mentioned is I wanted to address a little bit, uh, 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 you know, the importance of, of, uh, taking care of half moon bay resident boats. Uh, and by that, I mean, um, you know, like Monterey, if you're not a year round tenant, you're not selling product out of there. And so, uh, I feel like, you know, with these hurdles that we're facing, it'd be nice if the client base that's coming down is coming down to support the fleet that's, uh, that's staying in your harbor. So I just wanted to put that out there as an idea, uh, and, and say that, uh, I think we should come first as half moon bay, uh, tenants. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Frank Souza again.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. I just want to back up, uh, Dan on that, uh, on that same thing with half moon bay guys here, the guys who are, you know, slip runners for, you know, years and that be nice to see you guys back us up on getting our businesses first crack at, at selling off the dock, especially with the sales dock being a limited space. I know last year there was times that out of town boats had pulled in there and I was watching some of our guys here who were struggling to sell their product, have to be sitting at the far end of a dock, watching out of town boats selling their product. That I'd almost like to see it where if, uh, your boats were selling crab, we won't, we wouldn't allow out of town boats to sell crab that day. But if there was nobody here selling crab and they wanted to come in, that that would be fine. It just would be nice if, if, uh, if we had the first crack at it. That's all.
Understood. Thanks. Lizzie, did you want to try G play again?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I actually I have, um, two questions. And the first one is, I'm curious as to how the eighty-five thousand dollar a year average, how that number was, um, decided upon that that was, would be the average income? How was that determined?
The eighty-five thousand is not an average income. The average, if, if the district, uh, elected to cap the fee at two thousand dollars a year, that would, that, that would represent, two thousand dollars represents two and a half percent of eighty-five.
I see. Okay. All right. And then, um, my second question is, well, developing this idea for this, um, new fee, has it been considered about the out of town boats that do come into the harbor and stuff? Has that been discussed anywhere along the way on how that would be handled?
On how out of boat, out of, out of town boats enter?
Uh huh. How that would be handled as far as imposing a flat fee or even a percentage on the commercial fishermen. When an out of town boat does appear and ends up doing dock sale, how would that be handled?
If the district goes with a flat fee, they would be, have to say, uh, pay a, a flat fee yet to be determined. And they also have to have a commercial activity permit. So they, they'll also have to, uh, participate in whatever the local boats are participating.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Captain Smith?
Am I unmuted? Good evening, uh, uh, everyone. Uh, one point that I would like to make, uh, uh, first off, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, Captain.
Okay, thank you. Um, one point that I wanted to make in regards to this, uh, there's something that was said about the, uh, percentages that the CPV pays. Um, one per commercial guy said the CPVs pay one point seven percent. So on a flat rate for twenty passengers, my, uh, percentage on that is, uh, uh, almost thirteen percent. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we are paying, um, a tremendous amount of money, uh, for the, uh, for our, our commercial passenger ticket fees. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Michael Mack? Go ahead, Captain.
You got me?
Loud and clear.
Sorry about that. Thanks again. Um, circling back to the, um, the out of town boats. I, I too have watched, you know, local guys, um, residents in our harbor sitting there on the sidelines just, um, because they didn't have the lucky draw or whatever. I just feel, I feel like opening our harbor up to the outside. Um, I wonder why we even take that step where, you know, there's, there's times where we're trying to pull into other harbors and we can't even get a guest tie, um, let alone sell product in their harbor. Um, so I just, um, for me personally, I just want to voice up, um, against that completely. And, um, I think, I think that when they're can create a lot of animosity, I, I, I think there's a whole lot more than just the flat fee that they would be paying. That would, um, that would, um, have me lean towards agreeing to that. I just, I'm against it. So thank you for hearing that out.
Understood. Thank you. Are there any other questions? And also, uh, Jack Rose?
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me? Okay, Jim?
Loud and clear.
Good. Yeah, I'm the one that sent in the questions via email, um, not concerning the fee, which I know that's something that, um, is needed on your end and whether it's a flat fee or a percent. Um, they have merits and demerits, but what, just on the flat feet point, I think it's actually, um, a, a, a disincentive, uh, for, um, out of town boats to come here. If you have a flat fee and it's fairly steep, they're perhaps less likely to come in and sell product as opposed to a, a pay as you go scenario. Um, but my, my questions that I sent on email will really pertain to the, the selling stations, eliminating the selling stations. And as stated in my email, um, I have a boat lift. I must store my boat bow first in my slip. And to sell my fish off my, uh, transom would necessitate customers walking down the narrow finger of the dock, which my dock neighbor would absolutely dislike. And really create a safety hazard in my mind, you know, with all the people walking around. So I'm hoping that that the committee would be open to exceptions in some scenario for that. And then my other point in my email had to do with the insurance requirements, which I think is, in simple terms, a one-size-that-fits-all. And that, of course, doesn't work with the small, medium, and large-sized boats that we have, and the small, medium, and large-sized risk that they would present. So I'm hoping that insurance requirements gets, you know, struck or rethought in a in a really comprehensive and fair way. But thank you for your help and appreciate the input.
Thanks, Captain. Yeah, like the, like I said in my email back to you, and yeah, I was going to bring these two points up, but the flat fee. Understand that for out-of-town boats, and then also the selling stations for your unique situation, we'll have to work it out with you because of your unique situation. We'd like to make this one-size-that's-all, but I understand there sometimes we have to make exceptions. So we can talk further on that at a later time, but I think we can work that out. And the insurance, I got your comments, one-size-that's-all may not be working. We'll take that under consideration as we develop it. And Captain Day, one more time.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Yes. Yeah, the that first point I was just hearing there was news to me about the front of the boat. That would create a problem, but you're gonna work on that. My other point is, where do we go from here? Is there any more meetings or is there a firm decision coming down?
Well, I had to take all this in, and I'll put another report together and will be put out in the public. And then there'll be either it'll go straight to the board, or we may have another workshop dependent on how the your comments are integrated. So that's unknown right now.
Okay, look, thanks for that. You know, that's the same old story. I'll leave some time out and come up with some thoughts and I'll email you.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, that'll work. Okay.
Thanks, Barry.
No, I appreciate it. Cheers.
Tyler Butler.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, I just had a question about the insurance stuff I'm hearing. What is the deal with that? Are you guys proposing to provide insurance that we pay for through you? Or are we just supposed to have our own individual liability and whole insurance type things that you want to see as good faith? What what is the story behind that?
Now, the insurance would be, you would obtain your own insurance coverage.
Okay, well, I I have I have that for myself, right? I mean, just, I mean, it's the typical liability and stuff. There's no special insurance you want to see for dock sale specific, right?
Not necessarily. There's certain minimum limits we're looking for. But again, we're
Okay, and then just the other thought, like I have a boat that I can easily insure. There are a lot of boats in the harbor, you know, older wooden boats, certain vessels where the cost of an insurance premium would outweigh the cost of the boat itself, you know, let alone some of the skips and other guys. So, you know, that would be a huge hindrance on a lot of people's business models if they were required to have insurance. So I think you guys should seriously take into consideration that point and not not apply that. I mean, the Harvard District should have its own insurance based on it's a public, it's a public entity paid for by the public taxpayers. So just there's there's that. And then I had shit, I had another another thought or point or something I wanted to make, but it's it slipped me. The weather's a little rough out here, so my mind's on other things, but that was just one thought there. So anyways, the other one slipped my mind. Sorry.
If you remember, please send me an email.
Okay, yeah, will do. All right, thank you.
I do not see any other questions or raised hands. And I believe I've answered all the
There is one other one. There's a raised hand, Jim. George Jew, he just raised his hand.
And before we go to George, I've addressed everything in the question and answers or made note of the comments made in the question and answers. So thank you for those comments. George. George, can you hear us?
George, I sent you a request to unmute. I see that you have unmuted, but we can't hear you. George, if you're calling from a phone, could you please type the last four digits into the chat? I hear audio coming in and out, so maybe it's unstable connection.
George, we're unable to hear you right now. We'll come back to you, and hopefully we have a better connection. We're gonna go to Tyler Butler one more time. Go ahead, Tyler.
Okay, you guys got me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, my phone was cutting out. I remember what I was gonna say. So it seems like everybody here, us fishermen, are making our points here on this meeting. You guys are gonna go back, review all of this stuff, come up with a new formula for your idea. My thought in question is, you know, based on your new model that you're going to come up with, after all our thoughts and opinions, then you guys just come up with a way that you're gonna you're gonna decide all this goes, or do you come back at us and we get a say in the next proposal of how you guys want to work this out? Because in my mind, I think, you know, we're being laden with the burden of extra cost on our business. So you guys, if you want to come up with a scenario, a sequence of certain ways you want to do it, and come at us and say, okay, here's your options, and then let the fishermen take a vote on those options. Is that a possibility?
Regardless if we go back out and have another workshop, or if we take it to the board directly, you and every other buddy, everybody else, all the fishermen who want to have a comment and provide their thoughts to the board will be available to do that and participate. So regardless of how I handle it, you will have that opportunity to speak. But my intent is to share it with you before going to the board and get your input, because I rather, if we have consensus going in, it's much easier for us.
Okay, I know, I understand. But I mean, just to reiterate what I was saying is that, you know, a vote, you know, and I know that's kind of hard to do because, you know, a lot of us, whatever. But I don't think it would be that hard to do to put together, you know, a few of your ideas or options or whatever your outcome is, you know, if there's variables and whatnot. And then ultimately let us decide on some of the options that you think are the runners-up, right?
Yeah.
If we could take a vote on it or whatever, that would be kind of nice to let us to not just come down and say, okay, well, you guys all had your piece, and this is the way I'm going to propose it. It'd be nice if maybe we got the vote on it.
Well, I definitely want to make sure that the board is aware of your opinion, and they can, they're here with us tonight, so they're listening to you. But yes, I hope to be an interactive process with you.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you for your time. I appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Captain.
Yeah.
G play one more time?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, this question is in regards to caring insurance for the boats that participate in dock sales.
Right.
I read I read through the agenda and the exhibits and everything, and after reading it, is the district going to require each boat to carry a minimum of four million dollars insurance? Does that, did I read that correctly?
That is, that is just one number would as put out for discussion, not necessarily the final.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And I apologize, I can't pronounce that last name, but Robert?
How's that? You hear me?
Good. Can you tell me how you say your last name again?
Are you able to hear me?
Loud and clear. Can you hear us, Robert?
I unmuted.
Robert, the speaker's on your computer.
Crank up.
All right, fantastic. Can you hear us?
You got me. Okay, great. My question is on the insurance. I hear you fine.
All right, let's go ahead and make your comment.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Yeah, I'm on a tablet, so maybe it's not going to work.
Hear you, Robert. I'll reach out to Robert after this meeting to get his input. I'll check the questions one more time.
You know, Jim, we could just take commissioner comments, and if there are questions afterwards, that's fine. But honestly, I think that I appreciate the comments tonight. I think that this is, these public workshops are good, but I also think that the board needs to be able to weigh in and talk about this. And also, I think that we're going to probably take this to the board meeting. I'm not sure how many more public workshops on this topic we're going to need. We have another public workshop on another topic on Thursday. But anyway, I just want to open this up to board or commissioner comments, and I want to thank all members of the public for being here today. And, you know, if we have any questions after the commissioner comments, I mean, well, I'll open up public comment again. But let's take commissioner comments. I don't know who wants to make any comments. Tom, did you want to? I don't know if you had any, I don't, I don't see any unmuted. Okay, Nancy, do you have any comments that you would like to make, Commissioner Briering?
Sure, yeah, I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank everybody who participated tonight. There were a lot of valuable comments made, and I think it's educational for us as a board and also for other members of the public who are listening. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Vice President Briering. Commissioner Matush, I see that you're unmuted.
I was gonna just bring up the percentage about charter boat fees with our passenger service fees. And those do vary quite a bit. I was calculating eight percent. I can see where you could get thirteen percent. Some of our things are flat fee, carry a lot of people. Well, that's a real big hit on one trip. But, you know, we've all got to pay for the infrastructure that's going on, who's paying for crumbling Johnson Pier. We've got to rebuild some docks. There's a lot of things going on that we have to seek revenue for. So I just wanted to clarify that we have a range of one point seven to say thirteen percent on fees.
Thank you. Commissioner Zimki?
Thank you, Commissioner Chan Correlli. I just want to thank the public for the comments that they've all provided. It really has helped with my understanding, and I'm sure that we will be considering all of those. I had one question for Jim. I, as I understand it, we're going to be using both limited CAPs and the regular CAPs for this, or your recommendation is?
That's a possibility, yes, for visiting vessels that are coming in for a single day or a weekend, get issuing them a one-time limited commercial activity permit just for those days. Or a vessel that's operating just one fisheries, we can also consider that for a limited purpose. But vessels, vessels operating more than one seat, one fisheries, looking at a full commercial activity permit.
And what what's the basic difference between that? Is there the, I'm assuming the both permits would have the same fee structure?
It really comes down to the ordinances of the Harbor District, where a limited commercial activity permit is something that is limited in scope and or limited in duration. And when this was first started many years ago, again, just to get the fishermen by when the when the market was slow, they issued limited commercial activity permits, which was for that limited time to sell that one catch. But it's grown so much over the years that now it's full-blown activities year-round by some of these vessels. So a limited commercial activity permit wouldn't be the right tool, in my opinion, for something that's a year long.
A year-long tool. Okay, great. Thanks, Jim. That's, I have no other comments.
Commissioner Larenas?
Yes, thank you. I have a lot of comments. Well, let's see, I took a bunch of notes. Well, I'll start off first, like everyone else. Thanking first, I'll start thanking with thanking staff. It's important to have these meetings at a time that the public can attend. We've got at least forty-two total participants, ten of which are staff and commissioners. We have a big showing for Harbor District Committee, a meeting. We have them at one o'clock in the afternoon. We typically have more staff than public. I appreciate that very much. Secondly, I also appreciate the commission setting this meeting up as a special meeting so that all interested commissioners can participate. It's very important to me to be able to participate, and that doesn't mean sitting there with my hand over my mouth. I like to be able to ask questions, as you know. I took some notes, so I'd like to make it clear to the public that we have two things that happen here. We have staff that work very hard to work with the public, gather information, write reports, and give them to the commission, and the commission works with staff and weighs in. Eventually, we vote and approve things. So the heavy lifting is really done with by our staff. And I'd like to recognize that and let you guys know I really do appreciate it. So when I, when I continue on, don't take it personally. The district has a long history of deferred maintenance. While the characterization of 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 our enterprise district, which is this true, we are an enterprise district, and roughly forty percent of our income comes from things like this. It's very true. But as far as I can see, and I live in near the harbor, a sailboat in the harbor, so I'm there a lot. I can see the deferred maintenance that this harbor has had. And while it makes our budget look good because we have a lot of money in the bank, we haven't used it well, as far as I'm concerned. And this goes back many years before all of us were even commissioners and even before the current staff that we have. So it's a little disingenuous to say that all our money from from our enterprise district goes back into fixing things at the harbor. I don't really believe that that's the case. We're still trying to play catch up, and that's like I said in the very beginning, this is not in any way a negative comment on our staff. It's more a negative comment on how our commission has run this harbor. Big sore point for me, and those of you that watch have watched our meetings know that I'm not for spending money at Oyster Point. I'd like to see our money go towards Hiller Point Harbor because we own the facility here. We don't I'd like to see our money go towards Pillar Point Harbor because we own the facility here. We don't own, own our Oyster Point. And what we're talking about now is exactly related to the fact that we spend money somewhere. That's on a property that's not ours. We'd be a lot better off here at Pillar Point if we. Had not gone into these, these legal arrangements with the city of South San Francisco. I'm not going to belabor that because we've got over it a bazillion times and I'm still not happy about it. The comments that most of you have made are great because. You've given me a, a lot of ideas on, on how these things should happen. So. I'm a little bit discouraged to hear that we might, that this might go back to, to a regular meeting. I think what needs to happen is. Our staff needs to work with you all as best they can. Take your comments. Put something together for us as a commission. And put it out in front of the public and come back to a meeting like this where you guys can come back to us and. Share your thoughts again. You know, we can't, we can't put it out for a vote for the public, but we can certainly. Take the staff report that's going to come to us and put it out for comment again. The reason it's a big difference is that when we have a regular meeting. We can't interact with you. The rules of engagement are different. In a special meeting like this, it's a workshop, so we can talk back and forth and staff can answer questions. And we commissioners can ask questions. A much better way of getting out of documents. So I think we need to go one more round with this. That's my opinion. I agree with a lot that's been said. I'd like to find a way to, to. Support our local fishermen above folks that come out of state, for example. I don't know how to do it. I'm hoping staff can do some, some work with this, especially taking in the comments that you all have given us. One, one possibility is reciprocity with other harbors that's, that have fish sales, especially in California. Don't know, even know how many there are. But, or what kind of logistical nightmare would be to create something like that? Maybe that's something to work towards. I'd like to see more discussions about this because. There's clearly a lot of good ideas here and we need to, we need to see what works best. And I'm all for supporting the local crew above and beyond folks that come from, especially out of state in big boats to sell here. I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you. I appreciate you all for showing up.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Zimki, I'm not sure if you want to say anything. You're kind of gotten closer to the screen, so.
No, no, I have no further comments.
Commissioner Matush.
I too want to thank everyone for their comments. I truly learned a lot and I've been in this harbor a long time. So I appreciated hearing what everyone had to say and the reasoning. And I look forward to seeing how this moves down the road.
Commissioner Ryaring. Okay. I'll just make a quick comment. So while I appreciate what Commissioner Laranis has to say about more workshops at the end of the day. This commission, like any elected body, has been tasked to make decisions. And the decisions that we make will affect not just the people and the tenants and, you know, the. The people who do business at the harbor, but these decisions affect the entire county. This is, you're right, Commissioner Laranis, it is a countywide agency. And the countywide. Residents expect us to make a decision instead of, you know, continue to draw, to have a long drawn out process. We've discussed commercial, commercial activity permits. Many times and I think that it is our obligation and our responsibility. As decision makers and policymakers to give staff direction. On, you know, what this board thinks. And I think that tonight's comments in our public workshop. Has been great. I appreciate and I'm think, I thank you Ed for bringing up. The fact that, you know, that these public workshops are useful and that's exactly why we have them. So. I think that Jim and his staff have done a great job. I think that we're all in this together. I think the commission. Has come a long way and thankfully we've been able to get things done. And I, you know, want to show my appreciation to the commissioners too. So, you know, we're all in this together and we must work together and we must make decisions and make policy decisions together. So thank you for being here to the public and thank you to staff for all of your hard work and thank you to the commissions. For your hard work and, you know, the multiple meetings that we've had. And public workshops so that we can hear what the public has to say. So.
I'd like to respond to that.
Sure.
I agree with you. We are tasked with making decisions. It's our responsibility, but it is our job as commissioners. To make appropriate, informed decisions with input from all the public. So making a decision is not our job. Our job is to make informed decisions. With input from the public and you're right, we are a countywide seat. Which is important for us to reach out to all, all of the county. And the fact that we have 42 participants. Is an example of a meeting. Where folks can actually attend. I, I don't agree. I think we need to have one more meeting where folks can see what we're proposing before we vote on it because. We will not be able to get, make an appropriate decision unless we do that.
Any other commissioner comments? I don't see any hands raised, so from the public either, but I will open it up to public. Sorry?
A motion to adjourn?
Oh, second. Okay. Um, can I just take one? Well, there isn't, can I just take one more public comment, Tom?
Please.
Okay. Um, Jim Berry Day has his hand up. And I'll just make this the last, last public comment.
Are you there?
Loud and clear, Captain.
Yeah, Virginia was, all due respect ma'am, I disagree with you there. I think we do need. Another, I'm backing Ed there. The reason being. I've only, and this affects me, you know, it's, it's right in my pie. I've only been informed about this basically today because I'm too busy fishing. So I've come here half prepared. There was one prior meeting which I got to. And basically, nothing was looked at. I'll do an email to Jim. But in all honesty, for something this important, because once you make a decision, that's it, we're out and. We have not had enough time to actually look at it because we are on the ocean working a lot. And I respect that, but I, I am heavily leaning with Ed there that we do need another one. That's all I got to say, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think Commissioner Matush made a motion to adjourn and there's a second. Any other comments from the commissioners for this motion? Okay, then let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Zimki.
Hi.
Mr. Matush.
Hi.
Commissioner Laranis.
You're on mute, Commissioner Laranis.
Yes.
Commissioner Chan Correlli.
Hi.
Mr. Ryaring.
Hi. Great. So this meeting is adjourned at 7:18. Thank you everyone for being here. Thank you, Melanie. For keeping track of what we're doing and thank you Jim and Julie and Lizzie for all, and John for all your work that you've done. Thank you.